What?
No, it was for this year. I really talked to Denise about it. I know what I'm talking about.
When we talked to Denise, Denise stated also that she, when you talked to her, you said that it was a motion, which it was a motion, but you didn't mention it was for the 2018 fiscal year.
Yeah, but she said we could move it.
You can't, no, no, no.
No, okay, you know, if y'all don't want to do it, that's fine. But let me tell you something. This budget doesn't show what you have in these financials. So something's wrong there. Because you don't have, you have the fifty thousand in the departmental report, and you don't have it in the budget. So you want to do it, you don't, you never listen, y'all. You think that, I don't know what I'm talking about, and I do.
They're two different financials.
No, they're not. No, they're not, yes. And even on the twenty seven.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
But, but listen, you counsel.
Oh, you need.
All of y'all got here. And none of y'all saw that. I just showed you. In the financials, it's in there.
All I'm telling you, all I'm saying to you is you can't move utility over to general fund. That's what I'm trying to say.
It shouldn't have been there.
You, but what you did, no.
You all put it there. Yes, you did.
That's what I'm telling you.
No, because you went to that council and here's a motion. And the, yeah, that, that, that's not. Okay, I'm gonna take a break because they're gonna approve this budget. I'm gonna take a break. Okay, I'm gonna go.
But though that motion was for that year for that budget, that's it.
Yeah, but she said we could put it back.
And I was trying to tell you, you can. But I tell you, you cannot move it from utility to general fund. There are two different things.
Okay, well, I'll come so we can come to this tomorrow. And you're wrong, because I talked to her today.
You cannot move money, you can loan money, but you cannot use money. How, there you go.
Not from one to the other.
But you can't move it.
That wasn't a loan, that was what, we were in the surplus.
I can't get the business for a day.
Well, we just the fifty thousand, and we were, we put it in the street.
If we were able to do that, you would do that for the salaries and move the money that you have in surplus from utility over to general fund. You can't do that, is what I'm telling you. I'm not talking about fifty thousand. I'm talking about just in general. You cannot use a dollar from utility over in general fund.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, everybody didn't even know what she's talking about. You act like, dude, you don't even know. Because they, but y'all didn't even ask about the financials. Why is it in the financials, dude, it's not in the budget? Why?
You should have taken all these things that we have.
That financial you're talking about is for this 2019, nineteen twenty, or twenty twenty.
Exactly, and the fifty thousand are in there.
But now we're into the twenty, twenty twenty one. Next year is.
Okay, and why isn't it in there?
You could, that's, that's.
No, yeah, but the money's there, it was there. Y'all probably used it for somewhere else, y'all need what you were.
No, it's true.
That's fine anyway.
There's thirty thousand there, you're trying to make it fifty thousand, right? Okay, I'm not telling you you can't, I'm telling you within the general fund, find the other twenty thousand to move into that.
I don't think you're, the fifty thousand is in, come back and wait.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but I'm trying to tell her, there's thirty thousand there. If she wants to move it, to amend it, find the other twenty thousand and move it from there to the area that you want. I'm not telling you you can't get done, I'm telling you for the utility part, you can't move that over. Council, do you all have any discussion on the item? So we're clear? If y'all want it to move to make any, any line item more, it's not that you can't. You have to find the money to pull it from. She, in two thousand eighteen, the one that she's talking about, it was a motion to be amended so that way that could stay at the fifty thousand. She's not wrong there. What she's wanting to do is wrong. She's wanting to move the money over from utility and show it into general fund. And that's when we start going in the red, because we're accounting for revenue that we don't have. That's fifty thousand dollars in general fund that we don't have, that's not accounted for, because it's in utility. Do, does that make sense?
It has to balance.
Yeah, it, it, it's like having your checks, your checking and savings, they're both your account, and you can spend them both, but you can't write a check from your checking over and over because you have money in your savings, because, I'm talking about olden days, because before they wouldn't move your money over from your savings.
Without a request, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying that you can't make it fifty thousand, you can if y'all chose to. But now we have to, if that's what y'all want to do, because there's thirty thousand, that's allotted there. You just have to find the other twenty thousand to move into that line item. It really wasn't that difficult. I mean, it, it, I'm not saying she can't do it, I'm not saying anybody can't do it, but that's, that's where that comes from.
During a workshop, and she could have been going and we could have helped her try to.
Yes, I mean.
You should have.
Doctor, have our, you propose to balance the budget like we should be balancing the budget?
There, when, when I, okay, the, on the numbers that I did, or the numbers I first did.
Yeah.
When we first, okay, when we first took the bu, the budget over, we already know that there's, it's not correct, right? Because in, in salaries, it was accounted, it was short changed, and in health insurance, it was over. It wasn't where it was supposed to be. So we were constantly having to do amendments, because it wasn't, the allotment wasn't there. That's the only difference in what this is showing and the other one. Now, here, there's two number, there's two of the numbers. There's two numbers that have to get changed so it balances out, okay? It's not that we, we found money, or we lost money, it's just so we can even out for the year, so we can have, you know, the, the goal to zero.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. Was there a surplus, or a, were it a reasonable red or black of that, with that budget?
So once I spoke to Denise, um, I know that you said you had spoken to Luke, but when I spoke to Denise, she said that in the general fund, that we are in the red.
And that's not what he said.
Right, and then as far as the utility, we, we, we're good. Um, I did ask her, you know, with all things, because, you know, COVID related, all overtime, all the materials that we bought that are, you know, she said that that's gonna be helpful. So we could possibly be in the black, it's just right now, we're in the red.
How much, how much is what we're in the red?
Uh, when I spoke to her, it was thirteen thousand.
That was Denise?
Yes.
And Luke told me we were in the black, chaperone, to the better.
Right, for the record, I will state that I have not bothered Luke, he hasn't been having, his mom has been sick, and his mom recently passed away. So for the budget, he was already moving his mom over with his sister, and, I mean, those are big factors too, in him not coming. I know that he said he would, but I didn't think it right to call him over while he's going through that, to have him come over here and talk about numbers, and we do ourselves.
So, do you know when we'll get reimbursed from that coronavirus?
We're waiting, we, um, we're, it's, go ahead.
The twenty thousand dollars is already in our, right?
Okay, so would that help with the thirteen thousand?
No, for, yes.
If, if, if they fall under that category?
After speaking with Denise, yes, because those are reimbursable through the twenty thousand.
And then are we gonna get any more, or you have to wait for when?
As you start using it, you can start, uh, going from the, for the one hundred and forty thousand.
And we all accept till December?
We have till December thirtieth. We do have another agenda item for the twenty.
So you give votes of the cap, and you decide on what amount for the businesses.
Well, no, 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 other than that, is, is the other part of it, in finding out information on that, they're looking further into it to make sure that we're able to do stuff like that. And it's not, uh, the population is what's gonna, to make it. So before we start giving money out, we have to make sure that we're able to do it, that we're gonna be.
Well, why is that girl here? If we were gonna give money.
And, and, right, and that's why we, when everybody decided to wait, we were able to start calling to figure out what was.
Okay, but it was okay, give ten thousand dollars to the school?
That's what I was thinking about.
At the moment, yes, but we have to wait for the funds to come in. And we have to make sure that we are eligible to do that, because once again, that goes based off of the population. Yes.
Well, why jump the gun? Why have it and us approve it?
Because it's better for them to see that y'all are willing to give money that is being allocated to the city, and it be a regulation from the state as opposed to us not wanting to do it.
And the deadline is December thirty first?
The, the thirtieth, yeah.
The thirtieth?
Yes, we still have two months, but at the next meeting, um, WOMAC is gonna come and speak on the matter to see on, um, the thing, and then so is the Lone Star Strategy, they wanna be put back up.
Who's WOMAC?
The, the thing to do, to go over to the TDM. Um, they're already taking care of the financials.
And why are they coming in? Why is he coming in? You didn't bring him into the budget?
Right.
That was the most important thing, and now you want to bring him in for the grant?
They, they requested.
Oh, my God.
Oh, the grant?
Yes. You could, and that was one of the things that was. Yeah, that was one of the things that was discussed, since they already have records, it would be able to.
You know, that's a good idea, but let him do it all. That's, that's, that is a good idea.
Even if we, even if we pay him.
It's the one that, yeah.
Once again, they were gonna be put on this agenda for that, specifically.
I would rather have him than anybody else.
His mom is gonna be put off till the.
He's very good.
But right now, we're in the moment.
We're like Rachel, I did.
Correct.
So, going into the budget discussion, motion? On the utilities, okay. So the other part, motor purchase here, um, the utility was to adjust the salaries and wages to the twenty one thousand six hundred and thirty two, and to move the social security.
Okay, so the salary adjustments for the raises that you want to give?
Well, we.
That's what you figured?
On this, for this was just to even it out. And one of the things that we didn't factor into the utility one was, um, the clerk.
The what?
The clerk. So even if, depending on whatever adjustment that council decides to give her, or give them, they would be able, whatever the surplus is, you would be able to move it wherever you want in utility, so. It, but the reason I put it in there, so that whenever it does come a factor, because y'all said to wait till the budget was actually passed.
But I thought it was already ready as a budget, I thought y'all had already done that.
Yeah, but it has to zero off.
And they did zero off, we might, it was off time?
Right, it was off, I think, what, eight thousand? Something like that. And then the other one was eight thousand, yeah, or something like that, you know, something. But, um, either which way.
So when, when are we gonna know the, if we want, how much, when are we gonna be in or out?
Uh, we should, once the financials come through, we have to wait for, for that, because the, whenever they do the August financial, September financials, it's estimated, right? When we go into August, we do like, okay, we multiply it by one month, because it's assumed that, like, salaries is gonna be three thousand, because it was three thousand in Au, in August.
Well, maybe, can you, you said Luke was coming for that thing, and that.
Yeah, I mean, he can do a report on that.
Maybe, so, because we want to know, after you turn, whatever we're gonna do there, in, and then see what we're gonna be in the red or in the black, how it's gonna be. And of course, that, we have the August financials only, we don't have September. We have to wait for September to see how we end up. So I understand that part.
The other thing too, I mean, back in, um, was it June? We didn't know that the possibility of us being in the red for the year was gonna be a huge possibility because of the whole COVID thing. We had a lot of people that weren't paying their bill, that really didn't care, because it was cheaper for them to do a new water bill as opposed to paying whatever amount it was. And because we weren't doing the shut offs for an extended period of time, a lot of people just opted to go ahead and do the, the, the two hundred dollars on a.
Supervisor.
As opposed to paying, I mean, some of the, some of them were outrageous, like eight hundred, some of them, I mean, but.
You used to do it, if you was the same family, they can't just put it under another category.
You, you, unless you have something specifically in writing, this comes from finance.
But I remember there was paid your bills for it?
No, we had, we had a few people that were.
Yeah, because we haven't had big shut offs, you know?
Yes, but we have, in order to do it like that, that is illegal, you cannot do that. Unless you have something in writing, which we don't. The other thing too, is we cannot tell people, uh, for the example, at one point in time, when I came to turn my water on, I was told that I had to pay a previous account that was not in my name, because I was living in that house. Rule of thumb, especially when you're doing third party, or the, the collections or whatever, you cannot divulge your information to somebody else in regard, even if it's a public matter, unless you have written consent, or you request for the openness of the public records. So, in order to avoid lawsuits, and whatnot, I mean, it's a long shot, but the way twenty twenty is going, I'd rather not. So, yeah, unless y'all put something in writing, we, we, we have to allow.
The way, I think, like companies do, they, they got smart, because you have to prove that you're the, like, the main head household.
That's for some of them, but not all of them.
Yeah, no, with COVID, no, you check it.
I mean, if you started doing that, they'd just do a big water bill.
The president stopped it all.
They, they're not being able to do big water bills anymore.
Until after the election.
Well, yeah, the only reason that we had such big water bills, because we were not able to shut off. Remember, I didn't do shut offs till June, and it was the end of the world, because I was the worst person ever, so. Anyway, do y'all have any other questions or regrets to add to number one? Do you have a motion? Ms. Franklin?
To adopt. The budget. For twenty five, five one this year to the city of Cremona. And pass ordinance number. Six thirty one?
Uh, uh-huh. Ordinance number six thirty one, an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for the city of Cremona, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty, and ending September thirty fifth, two thousand twenty one, and declaring an emergency. Be adjudined by the city council of the city of Cremona, General County, Texas, that the mayor of the said city has therefore duly and timely filed in accordance with law a budget for the said city covering a fiscal year running October first, two thousand twenty, to September thirty, two thousand twenty one, a budget which is attached here to be, and same is hereby, and all things approved, and that same is proper and correct. Wherefore, said budget is here and now, and all things approved and adopted, and it shall be effective October, October sixth, two thousand twenty. This ordinance is required to be an emergency measure, which was, which shall have and take effect from and after its first reading, for the reasons that the fiscal year commences October first, two thousand twenty, and after approved adoption of this budget, and after pub, publication of such ordinance, it is for the immediate preservation of public property and business, and provides for the daily operation of all municipal departments, and lays a pres. Prerogative to the appropriation of money to different current and other expenses. The public is welcome to come to city hall to view the budget. Red, voted upon, approved, and adopted by the members of the city council on the sixth day of October, two thousand twenty. It will be called one. Uh, Ms. Guillermo Martinez? Guillermo Martinez is for. Ms. Marmitulis?
Against.
Marmitulis is against. Mi, Mr. Richard Velazquez? Mr. Richard Velazquez is for. Ms. Kristin Munoz?
For.
Mr. Simunoz is for. Mr. Andres Garza? Mr. Andres Garza is for. And we have nobody abstaining from the item. So, um, right, that's. Who, uh, do I have a second for the motion? Second by Mrs. Munoz? All in favor? You're against, correct, Mr. Martinez? Okay. Andy, Richard, and Martha? Against. Okay, moving on to item number two. Do I sign this right? I sign that one? Do I have to sign the ordinance?
I agree, June, the thirty sixth.
Okay. Okay, here we go. We're gonna have to be exact with that. Item number two, discuss and take actions to approve the tax rate and pass ordinance. Do you have a motion?
I agree with your suggestion, Jason, under zero point five, zero, zero, zero.
There you go. Mr. Garza?
I agree that he approved the tax rate at zero point five, zero, 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 zero. I think I'll wait for twenty five.
Second?
Pass the ordinance.
Oh, and pass the ordinance?
Ordinance number six thirty.
Second, second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor? Motion passes direct to the line of the document two? Okay, Denise, please take this. Ordinance number six thirty two, an accordance levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Cremona, Texas, providing for the manner of paying the ad, the lower taxes levied and declaring an emergency pack of passage of said ordinance be ordained by the city council of the city of Cremona, Texas. Section one, the assessment here for the tax purposes of the city of Cremona, Texas, shall begin on the first of each calendar year. Section two, that there is levied, and there shall be collected for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Cremona, Texas, for the year two thousand and twenty upon property to taxation, a tax point of zero point five, zero, 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 zero. On each one hundred dollars valuation of property, said taxing, moving and appointing to specific purposes herein, set forth. Section three, the tax levy shall be first, and prior name shall be superior, and prior to other names, purpose, and incomferences. And this name shall attach to personal property to the same extent, and with the same priorities as to the states. Section four shows, and part of this ordinance be declared invalid for reasons, the invalidity should not affect the remainder of the ordinance, which remains as established in the full court of justice. Section five, whereas, made it imperative that the levying of taxes and use of support of the municipal government of the city of Cremona, Texas, be adopted. This ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure, which shall, shall have and take place, effective from after its first reading and after publication of such ordinance. It is accordingly ordained, read, voted upon, passed, and approved, and adopted on the sixth day of October, two thousand twenty. Uh, Ms. Martinez? Jeremiah is for. Mr. Martinez?
For.
Ms. Marmitulis is for. Mr. Velazquez? Richard is for. Ms. Munoz?
For.
Ms. Kristin Munoz is for. And Mr. Garza? And Mr. Andres Garza is for. The record shows that the ordinance number six thirty two was passed unanimously by the Cremona City Council.
Sure. Um, I talked to Sid meeting from the appraisal district, uh, because I wanted to know whether we have to do our own separate, uh, statements. And he said, no, because Orange Grove, the, the day that we didn't have a quorum, but that Friday, Orange Grove also did, well, that was the day that they passed theirs. The, the, the budget and, and the tax rate, so they were late too. And so was ours, and so he's not gonna start printing till about the third week of our test.
That's been news.
So we're gonna be all together.
That's been news.
We'll be fine.
Okay. Item number three, discuss consider and act upon applying for the Texas Park and Wildlife Community Outdoor Program Grant Opportunity. This is a no-match grant in the amount of five thousand dollars, up to the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Mrs. Martinez?
I have a question on that. Who was in charge of that grant?
What do you mean, like?
What lady, or is it a lady, a man that came and talked to you, or?
Uh, Michelle's the one that came and talked to me about it, but she's not in charge of it. Right now, technically, there's nobody in charge of it, we were just giving the information.
Okay, are we already out of probation for that?
Probation for what?
Because we were on probation, because a while back, later, and I think Dawn should remember, because she was here at city. We pa, we got money for the wildlife, parks and wildlife, and apparently, something happened that the money was not, and nobody had a kind of benefit for, and we were put on probation for that. Yes, Miss Dawn, don't, you know, that, that's what happened. So I would like for you to ask, whoever's in charge, or whoever you talk to, just ask them, and we're out of probation already.
Okay, the worst thing that may happen is we, if we would apply, we would be declined, because we still are on probation, but I think.
They'll tell you.
Yeah.
Well, I want you to find out.
But I'm just one of those, because everyone had great, okay, I put in the word. No, the ones that were gonna give some money for the park, did it in a way we can't handle for.
In time?
No, not kind of. There was no money exchanged until they finally, in other words, they, I was gonna say, I will donate.
The match?
No.
Okay, the match, you know?
That was, that's what I want, yes.
Okay.
So until, all of that went through, was when we would receive money. We didn't have received any kind of money.
Do you know what year that was?
Remember that year that we had the meeting that, uh, hold on, maybe. Remember the year that we had the meeting that Betty, well, Betty's, she's dead already, but, that she came and she needed to talk to me, and, because they were asking who was in charge of the monies back then, and Betty wanted to talk to me before the meeting, and when Tino went, it was Tino that was mayor at the time, and, uh, she wanted to talk to me before to let me know who it was, and I told her I didn't have time. We went outside, I took a break, because he would kept on saying, you have to know what it is, you gotta, no. And Betty told, that's what Betty told us at that meeting, that it was Mr. Perez that was the mayor, he asked for a break, we went outside, there was a big scandal from him, because I, he got upset, because his name was, but, that's what was told from me from Betty. Betty's dead, Betty's gone. But, you know, something happened, that the money, they wanted to know what happened to the money. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're out of probation, and it's good to go, and I would not mind voting on this to make sure. So whoever's, and maybe this person's you, maybe they don't know about it, or maybe, you know, because I don't want to get in trouble.
But no, why are you gonna ask? I mean, it was, what, nineteen nineties, or what?
It doesn't matter, we were on probation.
Eighties.
We were on probation, now it's in the eighties.
If, once they put it, if it's something, they're just gonna call.
It's either gonna pass or it's not gonna pass.
Yeah, why would you wanna bring that up to them?
Well, I, I'm just telling you this.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I just want to know.
Yeah.
Why for a grant?
What was that, what was that grant for? Do you remember? Do y'all remember what that grant was for, the one that, you understand that, the match, or whatever?
The park, right?
Was it for the Laguna?
Yeah.
Okay, so, originally, that was supposed to be some sort of grant park, or what?
They got monies for it, the money disappeared. And she knows it, you know that, Dawn.
No.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, she didn't find it relevant, and I would.
It was nineteen eighty?
I mean, yeah, we're, we're debating on, because something irrelevant.
Frisbee wasn't even born yet, I was a kid.
I mean, yeah, I'm going to send ourselves up to.
No, it's okay, don't even have a problem.
Um.
We're not, because nobody will accept you, maybe, but none of us were there. Why would we be penalized for somebody, somebody else?
And even if we.
Well, it's not us, it's the city.
Yeah, well, even if it's the city.
Exactly, the city.
Yeah, Mama, but we weren't here, when all that happened.
It doesn't matter.
No, it's.
I was here as mayor when I tried applying for the tax part, and they told me we couldn't, because we were on probation. That's why I'm telling y'all.
And don't bring it up, let's, let them tell them.
Why don't we just apply, and then they decline it, they decline it?
It's, it's simple.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Y'all can do what you want, the council can do whatever they want. I'm just putting you in my opinion.
Right, no, no, no.
Okay, and y'all don't like it too bad. I'm just telling you the truth.
That happened, and you were on the council, why didn't you do something?
I wasn't on the council, I was mayor.
Well, that's.
I, we didn't get it, and you knew about it?
I didn't, I wasn't here. No, I was around to all that, even before it happened. I was ahead of you. That was when Leo Perez was around, I was not here. I was, when Lee was mayor.
Well, I was mayor when Tino Perez was.
Well, I wasn't around.
He's the one that you'll meet as mayor.
Leo, Lee was the mayor when I first came in that. I, I have no idea what the YO would.
Anyway, going back to the original discussion, we're gonna get it or not. There's no sense in not applying.
It's a no-match grant, you almost.
It's a no-match grant, even if it's five thousand, I mean, at this point, even if it was three hundred dollars, it doesn't matter, because it's something you don't have. And the worst you're gonna tell us is no.
Where is it, did you apply for, at this place? What is it called? Tech Park and Wildlife, do you have a phone number?
No, no, we, we would be looking out to see if somebody for a grant, yeah, whatever.
So who came, and how did you know? Who's Michelle? Who's Michelle?
Michelle's the lady that helped the police department with their grant.
And did you, does she have a last name?
Uh, Martinez, there you go.
And she worked for?
Herself.
What is her title?
She doesn't, uh, she doesn't have a company name.
Does she have a number?
Nora, what are you gonna do, go and tell her?
Nothing, you're not, we're probably asking that.
Are you gonna bestm-?
Oh, my God.
Let, why are you gonna go tell Texas Park, we were on the probation.
No, that's not what I'm gonna tell them.
Well, then, what are you, you don't need to be.
You don't know what I'm gonna do?
Then, she is the one that.
Why are you so offended by it?
Because, Nora, if you were mayor, you did something wrong, it's on you, it's not on us.
Oh, okay, then it'll be on the mayor then, okay, that's fine.
It wasn't on us.
Why are you being so offended for asking? Obviously, you don't ask questions. Now I know why people are complaining about you.
I don't care.
Everywhere.
Listen, Nora, the thing.
No, you listen, I don't wanna hear you, your mom. I don't have nothing to hear you say. I didn't tell anybody about this, I said it here.
You're telling people out there that you're not serving?
No, I'm telling them here, you all the future.
You're the mayor.
I don't have to tell anybody.
Well, they don't, because you were the mayor.
Yeah.
And then the money was missing, that doesn't sound good.
What money?
You just said there was money missing.
Yeah, well, I was the mayor when the money was missing.
Didn't you just say?
She, no, I was the mayor when we were gonna apply for that Texas Park and Wildlife. And it, they, it denied it. The mayor was Tino Perez, and the city's secretary was Donna.
Well, she just said the money was due to you. But y'all just follow through with the grant or whatever, right? Because that's probably why, because they were awarded, and they didn't follow through with it. It wasn't the children's money. You can't just get your grant and then not just sit back and do it.
I mean, it's been almost thirty years, dummy, and I elected and kind of nice to do that.
I'm, it's stupid, oh, my God.
Anyway, it's almost forty.
Oh?
I said a good word, almost forty.
It's almost forty.
Forty, yeah.
Do you have any discussion on this? I mean, if we do get it, it would be something to link for, so that we can start to fix some of the stuff that we have wrong, so.
And that lady, she's the one who applied.
She would not be the one, but she was the one that gave us the information. This is just to allow us to proceed further, so that we can get somebody to help us to do the other.
And who is what we're gonna go with?
Uh, I, 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 I don't know, that would be up to the council. We would put it out, so that way they would be able to, the same way that it works for grant works, that we have to do the scoring, that we have to do all, it would be the same, the same process. Unless it's.
Are you sure you can do it online?
Right, no, no, but I don't know, because of, based off of the amount.
It's only five thousand, you're gonna end up paying two or three thousand for the administrative.
No, that's not true, it's based off of percentage. Yeah, no, positive, anytime you could.
You can go online, and you can see.
Right, no, no, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we can't apply by ourselves, I'm just saying this is for the opportunity to apply. I mean, because if I could do the application by ourselves here, it's not, it's not that big of a deal.
There's no charge anyway, so, there's no charge.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and she came, and she gave us the information, willing, and she already said that she wouldn't be able to take it on, because it, it conflicts with whatever she did, but she brought that information to line for the city, because I asked on whatever grant she gave.
You just click on it, and you see all the questions.
Yeah. And, do I have options?
So would it have to go up for, like, for, like, how would we work?
To apply for.
She can do it, don't doubt it, but it's gonna ask you for financials, okay?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think I've recorded all of them.
So does I move to apply?
Do, we, we just need to ask it to do the application process. Once the application process is complete, then it, it's depending on the, um, depending on every, we would have to do procurement to go up to see who the grant writer would be, if it's a certain amount, and then move forward that way. I can't just apply and then be the grant oriator, the engineer, like, I mean, all that has to go out, so.
If it's five thousand dollars.
Five thousand's different, wait, if it was two hundred, that's, that's something different. A micro, think big, right, so, it's over two hundred thousand.
I move that the city of Fremont apply. For a grant. Through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Community Outdoor Program.
What was the last part?
Texas, Texas Wildlife Community Outdoor Program. In the amount of not to exceed five thousand, is that what we want? We say, we have probably one or five, or not?
I would, no, you don't do the application, they just, they will award you according to if they.
Okay, all right, so we don't need it all through?
No. So after program, that was the end?
Yes.
Okay. Second? Second by Mrs. Munoz. All in favor? Ms. Ves?
Epstein.
Okay, motion passes. I don't know, oh, I will say, um, the, the one for, the one that just passed, apply for, this would be something to assist in, um, bow and arrow, anything that's in relation to outdoors. Um, so, and, uh, whenever, I did speak to him regards to the, the Luna, because of the area that it affects, and that will probably be something wonderful, so even happening to outdoor activities, so I guess this would be in correlation with school, or with four H, or whoever, so that we can start doing stuff out in this area to make it useful, so people can actually come and start doing activities and blah, 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 so. Item number four, discuss consider an act upon applying for the Texas Park and Wildlife Recreational Trails Grant Opportunity. This is a twenty percent match grant in the amount of four thousand dollars up to the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. This is for an actual trail. There, there's, um, there's a couple different areas that they would be able to, um, go over. I do have some of the information. This is for the recreational trails, um, I'm trying to just run through the reimbursement. Oh, this one is a reimbursement program. So, um, we would first, we'd do the work, and then we'd reimburse the work after. Kind of the same one that Mr. Dorga.
Like, probably a program that we would.
Yes, or get the money back, yes, and they would give you the amount for it. Um, some of the examples, I'm trying to, um, figure out the little resources, this is the paperwork on it. But they have given me some paperwork to, to let us know what you would be able to do. Um, I know that there's been talk about making a boat ramp, making it an actual, the liability and it becoming that, and it, that basically holds the waters kind of, you know, and kind of just throws the whole thing out, but anyway, um, it would be some sort of trail park. We would have people from, um, Texas State and come, um, we have this endangered species called Ambrosia. Um, they would come and start planting some of that there to see if they would be able to survive in that kind of area, and that, that's kind of the, uh, stuff that they would be able to do in, with this. But, um, like I said, it's another possibility, even though it is a twenty, twenty percent match grant, um, we, we, I mean, we, we literally throw that away in Gadija every year, so, um, anyway.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot. Yeah. Do y'all have any discussion on item? Do I have a motion?
We need a grant for the street.
And as much as we under, I understand that, we, I mean, we had one for the FEMA, and that one, I mean, that one was never followed through, so we don't have that one anymore. We have, uh, other than that, I have, so this way we're all on the same page. I've already checked to see if there is any grants out there specifically for roads, there's not. So, I mean, if anybody starts to ask, like, you need to look for grants on roads, there's not anything out there. It has to be from a declaration of disaster, anything that gets categorized. So unless you are in a flood zone, or you had to have tractors and stuff that came and messed up your roads, or roads are already messed up, so there's kind of a justification to get that, so.
But y'all are gonna get a pond over there, so somebody can drown, and the city can get sued.
It's called a, a walk trail, not a pond.
A walk trail, whatever, somebody falls over.
There's two different things.
It overflows when it rains.
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a motion? Ms. Munoz?
I move for the city of Fremont to start the application process for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Recreational Trails Grant Opportunity.
And ask you after the process?
It's literally the, I'll land, start the process of applying for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Recreational Trails Grant Opportunity.
Second? Second by Mrs. Martinez. All in favor? Ms. Ves?
Epstein.
Okay, motion passes. Um, take action on payment of bill. Tell me again, we're done.
Have you seen the cost of labor, how much it's gone up? I went to go buy three quarter, and I buy one, and they went up from seven to four. Do we buy eight? Just four to four.
They don't.
It's, no, it's more than, it was mine. Like, what does that do to the cost of the house?
Because it's the, the.
It makes you, my, like, my painting, because I do, because it makes everything more expensive for me to go buy it.
Or they changed the name of it, right?
Yeah, like Wes did for Valero, but it's still Valero, it's just the bank that they're using.
All city, not citation books, did they ever fix the machines?
I'm not sure.
The officers, did they ever fix the, the machines, the rest of the, the citation books?
Another story between the ticket writers, well, because Ann was, nobody had any idea that they were doing a good job, she was quoting funny, because they were using it, so, I don't know, maybe it's for the letters of violation, because the citations are not directly of the property owner.
Oh, maybe that's.
It's possible.
Give me a camera, because I can't drive.
Oh, no, it's okay, no. She answered it, well. Okay, my partner, it says municipal court fee, a court fee?
Oh, that's, um, they, uh, they send out the letters to people, those that we can't collect.
Oh, okay.
They charge the person a certain amount, so they keep that amount, but they're still waiting.
Okay, okay.
They're back.
So, okay, so it's not through the municipal court here, it's through their municipal.
Okay. Or through law.
Yeah, okay, I saw, I, I got reminded we thought of our municipal.
I move that the case is in.
Second by Mrs. Martinez, all in favor? Unanimous, motion passes.